Monday, December 2nd, 2024 meeting of the Fitchburg School Committee. I call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. So I ask anyone in the audience, if you're recording this meeting, please identify yourself. Seeing none. I ask now that all electronic devices be placed into silent mode. That one's for me. And next on our agenda, we have salute to the flag, and it is my pleasure to lead us in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we have school committee members and student reports. School committee chair report. I am happy to report that the negotiating team has, after almost a year and 19-plus very fun meetings together, we have reached a tentative contract agreement with the FEA. We will discuss this in an executive session with the school committee at the end of this public meeting, as noted on our agenda. After, once we adjourn to enter into executive session, we will not return to public session to discuss any matter except to adjourn. Okay, that is all for me. Next, we have the report of the resource subcommittee.
Resource and school building needs will meet tomorrow night at 5:00.
5:00 PM. Thank you. Okay, and school building needs as well?
Same.
They're both five?
Yeah.
Okay, December 3rd. Thank you. Pete, policy subcommittee.
I have nothing to report, but we will be meeting on Wednesday, December 11th, from 5:00 to 7:00 at Central Office.
5:00 to 7:00.
We're on section?
F? F?
No.
Eight?
I. I think it's I.
Are we finishing J? I don't know. We're moving along, though.
We are moving along.
And this is, you know, finalizing the policy for the school committees such that it'll be available online as well, correct?
Absolutely, right.
Yes, some of the policies have not been updated since the early '70s.
Oh.
So some of them needed to be looked at and adjusted from what's currently happening in our world in 2024.
And a lot of them are being adjusted due to changes in Massachusetts law.
Yeah.
So we're just making sure everything that we are doing is in compliance.
Thank you very much for doing that work.
Needed to happen.
Yes. Okay, we have student support subcommittee. Dr. Knight is not on Zoom, correct?
No, our next meeting will be on January 6th.
January 6th. January 6th. You know, that's National Samantha Day.
Is it? Okay, good to know. I will be here that night, too.
Okay, we have school personnel subcommittee. We have no report at this time. And student representative report.
Good evening. December 11th is the welcome dinner at the Old Mill for the three sophomores who have been inducted into Step Up to Excellence. Performances of FHS's winter play, Lost and Found, in IKEA are on December 13th and 14th at FHS, both at 7:00 PM. The Coral Kaleidoscope Concert is being held on December 10th at 7:30 PM in the Weston Auditorium at Fitchburg State University. It's featuring the choirs of Fitchburg State University and the Fitchburg Limister and Wachusett Regional High Schools. It is free and open to the public. Members of the FHS band are volunteering at the Holiday Wrapping Booth at the Whitney Fields Mall from 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays up until Christmas Eve, as well as Monday, the 23rd, and Tuesday on Christmas Eve. So if you need your gifts wrapped, it's a great place to go, and all proceeds go to support the band. Memorial Middle School's Turkey Trot Run was a great success and raised a lot of food and money for the food pantry. Memorial is having a student staff basketball game from 5:00 to 7:00 on December 12th, put on by the United Way Youth Friendship Program. This Thursday, December 5th, is an early release day because of parent-teacher conferences. The Fitchburg Fire Department at 33 North Street is teaming up with Fitchburg Public Schools and is accepting donations of toys, clothing, and gift cards for vulnerable students up until December 12th, so be sure to go and donate. And December vacation starts on Monday, the 23rd, so it'll be nice to have the weekend before. Thank you.
Last-minute shopping, right?
Yeah.
Yep, that sounds about right.
Me, too. Yep, that's what I do.
Thank you for the update, James. Okay, any questions or? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next on our agenda, we have approval of the minutes from the meeting of November 18th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of November 18th.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes from the meeting of November 18th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next, communications. I assume we have no communications?
No communications on my end.
Okay. Public comment. We have public comments of no more than five minutes in length were offered to be submitted. Did you receive any?
I did not, nope.
All right, now I invite anyone in the audience that wishes to give a public comment. Okay, you, please identify yourself by name and city of residence, and you're free to make a public comment of no more than five minutes in length.
Perfect Samantha Freeheart, city of Fitchburg. First off, thank you so much for allowing me the ability to speak before you today. When I originally decided to speak, I was planning on coming to address the proposed 30-minute extension and advocate for the mental well-being of all students in our district, but I've since heard that that proposal has been dropped, and for that, I am truly grateful. My speech will instead touch upon this high importance of parental involvement in these major decisions. My main role as a parent is to nurture and aid my kids to be the best humans that they can be and to put their health, both physical and mental, as well as safety, as my first priority. I consider myself to be very involved in my children's education. Two of my children are currently enrolled at South Street, with my third entering the next school year. Even though we are brand-new to the district, in that time, I've had the honor of being the PTO president at South Street for the last two school years. With this role, I find myself in the building on average two to three times per week. I've had the pleasure of working very closely with all of the amazing administration and staff at the school. Here, I would just like to pause to personally thank Hannah Tumber, Jackie Novato, Laura Douglas, Kristin Inzinger, and Lady Laney Deramello for the tremendous job they do and for always having my children's well-being as their top priority. Even with this luxury of being in the school, I did not hear anything about this proposed extension to my children's school day until I randomly stumbled upon an email sent by the district regarding the union's negotiations. Teachers unable to reach out to speak with their students' parents regarding this because it was regarding their personal contract. After speaking with parents I am personally in contact with, I soon started to realize that no one knew exactly what I was talking about. It was never directly sent to the parents by the district or school committee for their input before it was even put on the table. That just didn't sit right with me because we, as parents, should have some level of say on what matters that directly affect our children. So I personally created and shared a survey on social media. The survey had the simple question, would you, as a Fitchburg Public School parent, like to see a 30-minute school day extension? That received a shocking 103 responses from parents in our district in just three days, who all had an opinion and personal testimony on how this proposal would either negatively affect or benefit their children in routine. I have since forwarded these results to Superintendent Thompson so he can read the testimonials from the parents in our district. I think it's important to remember, not every parent has the resources to attend every meeting or join every committee, but most have the ability to take a few minutes to send an email or answer a survey. So I strongly urge the school committee and the district when considering the next policy change or proposal to bring the conversations right to the parents in a way that we can easily engage because we put a humendous amount of trust in you every day to keep our children safe, and in that trust, we do not give up our right as parents to make decisions and be a part of the change in our children's educational journeys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no further public comment, we have superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, first item of business is an out-of-state field trip. Our high school robotics team is asking to travel to New Hampshire on January 11th. This is on a Saturday, and they are asking for your permission to go to a robotics competition. And Dawn Marshall couldn't be with us this evening. She wasn't here today, but she will be here with the team in February to talk about the competition on January 11th and to do an update on where the robotics team is currently at and what they're currently working on. So in front of you this evening is permission for them to attend on January 11th.
Thank you. So this is like the demonstration that we had where they were flying the drones?
Yes. Yep. So she will be back in February with the team.
Can we take this action item out of order and approve it now?
There's nobody here.
Yeah, you can do it now or you can wait till later. It's completely up to you.
Make a motion to approve action item 24435.
Motion and second to approve action item 24435. I suppose, should we take it?
Do we have to take it out of order first?
Motion, take it out of order first?
Sorry. I thought that was the motion. Okay, let me retract my original motion. Make a motion to take action item 24435 out of order.
I second.
Motion and second to take 24435 out of order. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, action item 24435 is before us.
Make a motion to approve action item 24435.
Motion and second to approve 24435. Any questions or comments on the motion? All approved.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Action item 24435 is approved. The out-of-state field trip for our VEX or VEX?
Robotics.
It's a VEX, it's VEX.
Yeah, I mean, VEX, VEX.
The VEX Robotics Team.
Yep.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you. We'll let her know that it was approved.
And wish Dawn and the team the best of luck.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, moving on. This evening, we wanted to provide to you an update on our strategic plan. As you all know, this is our last year of our strategic plan that we started in 2000, 2001, but technically, it really didn't get kicked off until 2022 because of?
Something happened?
Something bad happened back in 2000 and 2001. It was a global pandemic. Do you remember that? It feels like forever ago. But we initially started this work back in 2000, sorry, 2020 and 2021, but we officially didn't launch our strategic plan until 2022. That being said, tonight, I will update you on our commitments and our actions that follow those commitments that we've been working on. So I'll provide you with an update tonight, and then I will provide you with next steps in developing our next strategic plan for the next five years that all of you have been engaged in so far in the last few weeks. So we'll update you on that. So in front of you, you have this in your packet, but we have six commitments that are our guiding principles and our action plan, or our strategic plan. The first one is curriculum that is accessible and reflective of all students. The second is a district-wide system of tiered academic and socio-emotional supports. Number three is staff development and diverse recruitment plan. Number four, strategic and effective use of all resources. Number five, a sense of belonging with all students, parents, staff, and all members of the community. And then number six, community and stakeholder engagement. So again, tonight, I'm going to talk to you about the actions that support each of these six overarching commitments in our strategic plan. So our first commitment is curriculum that is accessible to and reflective of all students. A lot of this, we talked about already at the end of last year, and we shared some of this work that we've been already doing, but this is all really engaged around teaching and learning in the district. So this year, we've implemented a new process called the Data Inquiry Cycle 2.0. This is an alignment of how we look at data at all our schools in Fitchburg. So we have one unique process that all our eight schools in Fitchburg use now. This is implemented across all our schools and then also in all our instructional leadership teams that really guide the instructional work that is happening throughout the school district and throughout each school. So that's one of the pieces that support our first commitment. The second one is building instructional capacity. So one of the things that teachers are doing on a weekly basis is meeting in professional learning communities. That's where the teachers all come together and actually plan the most effective lessons to meet the needs of their students, whether with their administrators, their coaches, or their team members on their gray-level team or in their departments. So that's happening throughout the district, and they're really focusing on making sure they provide the best lessons or they're preparing the best lessons for students and also providing the right amount of supports for students so they actually can access gray-level instruction. So that's happening throughout the district. In addition to that, we're making sure that our teachers are also using our high-quality instructional materials. Those are the materials that we use to teach. Over the last four years in Fitchburg, we've purchased millions of dollars of new high-quality resources for all our teachers to use. So because of that, there's a lot of planning that goes along with that and how to use that resource. So that's what's happening for that second action step, building instructional capacity. In order for us to monitor what's happening in instructional leadership teams and also in professional learning communities, we have to do something called learning walks. So we've been making sure that all our administrators, our teachers, and central office folks are in the classroom on a daily basis. So whether it's myself, Glenda, Jeremy, the principals, the directors, the teachers in the building, we're making sure that we're in there monitoring the instruction that's happening in the schools. And to do that, we ended up revising our learning walk tool that is pretty much talks about what really good instruction looks like, and there's different pieces that we are seeing being implemented at all our different schools throughout the district. One of the big pieces that we're seeing is around student discourse, the fact that we need to get our students talking. There's a lot of research that talks about if we get our students to talk before they write, before they do an assignment, you'll see a lot of improvement in their outcomes. So that's one of the things that we're encouraging, a lot more student discourse, and that's what we're monitoring, one of the pieces that we're monitoring in our learning walks. And then last but not least, for our first commitment is leadership collaboration. So each month, we have three opportunities for our principals and assistant principals to meet as administrators. In addition to that, we also have something that's called a district instructional leadership team that's monitoring our focus on our high-quality math instruction in middle school. So that district instructional leadership team meets monthly to actually monitor the work that's happening around math at the middle school level, in addition to making sure that we have monthly admin meetings happening throughout the year, monthly. So those are the pieces around curriculum that is accessible to and reflective of all students. I'll pause here, Glenda. Did I miss anything?
No, I don't think so. I think you covered it all.
Awesome.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Could you explain ILTs and?
Yep.
And the PLC?
Yep, so ILTs are called instructional leadership teams. We have those at a few levels. So each school has an instructional leadership team. That instructional leadership team really monitors the instruction and the data that's happening in each school. So that team is made up of every, in every school of administration, selected teachers and instructional coaches. So they meet several times a month to actually monitor the teaching and learning that's happening in their building. The other one is professional learning communities. Professional learning communities are teams of teachers who meet periodically to actually plan effective lessons. So in every school in Fitchburg, there's professional learning communities happening at each level, whether it's at grades K to 5, 6 to 8, or 9 to 12. That's happening throughout the district. Did I answer your question, Pete?
Yes, I think we have an audience out there that might.
Okay. Any questions around our first commitment? All right. Our second commitment is a district-wide system of tiered academic and socio-emotional supports. So this year, we made sure that we have clear SMART goals or SMARTY goals that are measurable throughout all our buildings. And one of the things that we tried to do this year is to make sure that the district goals then are aligned to the schools' school improvement goals, and those school improvement goals then are aligned to our administrators' goals in addition to all our staff goals. So one of the things that we wanted to do is make sure we had a through line, so it's not looking like it's another thing that every level is doing, but there's some coherence and vertical alignment happening throughout all our, throughout the district, throughout the schools, and throughout our staff. So that has been clearly established this year. So you'll see that in all, and you probably saw that recently with all our schools reporting out, that everything was aligned to the district plan, the school plan, and then professional goals for our teachers.
And what does SMARTY stand for?
You had to ask me. Strategic, Measurable, Achievable, Results-Oriented, Timed, and?
Equitable.
Equitable. That's the E. So every time we write a goal, we make sure that it's very clear in hitting all those pieces.
Okay.
So the next piece is making sure we have equity in our instruction. So as you all know, I've talked a lot about this over the years, we have a really strong co-teaching model happening at all our buildings throughout the district. Co-teaching is an opportunity where our students don't need to leave the classroom in order to receive their instruction. So that, for example, let's say we have a student on an IEP, an Individual Education Plan, a special education student. What we do is we actually have that special education teacher push into the general education classroom and work with the general education classroom so that student doesn't miss a beat. They provide the supports necessary so that student can access the gray-level instruction. On top of that, they also may have to provide specific instruction based on that child or number of students' needs, right? So that happens throughout our classrooms in Fitchburg for our special education students and also our English language learners. So we also have co-teaching opportunities involved for our English language learners. And what research tells us is providing students with the supports needed into being and staying in classroom and not being pulled out allows them to catch up and actually eliminates that gap that could happen if we pull the kid out and provide them with isolated instruction that's not on gray level. So we make sure we are providing those supports for our students, and they're getting what they need in the classroom so they don't have to be pulled out. Again, some students also need to be pulled out. So if that student does have a need, they may have a little bit of both inclusion and also pull-out instruction happening for ESL and special education. So that's one of the beliefs that we strongly have in Fitchburg, the co-teaching initiative. On top of that, we also have a consultant working with us this year from a company called Blue Engine. This is our first year working with them, and they're providing support to our administrators in addition to support to our educators who are involved in the co-teaching initiative. And then last but not least is tiered supports. We're making sure that we have clearly aligned supports for all our new curriculum resources outlined for Tier 1, for Tier 2, and Tier 3, instruction happening throughout all our schools. In addition to this academic instruction, we also have socio-emotional curriculum that is also being implemented at the same time in all our schools and all our classrooms. So not only is the academic curriculum important, also the socio-emotional curriculum is also important, too. And around the socio-emotional curriculum, we're still looking at what's best for students around socio-emotional curriculum and still making sure we're aligning and purchasing quality curriculum that addresses and meets the needs of our students. So those are those three supports, or three action steps that go along with commitment number two.
We?
Anyone want to add anything? Jeremy, Glenda, and any questions on that?
For the socio-emotional curriculum, I think it was one of the elementary schools, they had a specific kind of socio-emotional?
Yeah, so that's at Crocker. They use something called Project Peace, if I say that correctly?
No.
Not Project Peace.
That's my election.
No, that's yours. Positivity project. It begins with a P.
Yeah, they have to do something every day, special.
Yeah, so what that is focused on is it's a theme a month that they focus on, some type of character trait each month. All the classrooms, the whole school focuses on that character trait. Their all-school assembly that they have is focused on this character trait, and they also teach that character trait on a daily basis during morning meeting.
So this, our strategic goals are to align our socio-emotional learning curriculums and strategies throughout the schools. So this is like the Crocker kind of a strategy, like a pilot program?
So the positivity project, that is kind of a model on how to talk about that character trait. That's been happening throughout our schools.
It happens at all the schools?
No, it happens, I would say, at two out of the eight schools, I'm sorry, two out of the three schools at the elementary level that has that kind of structure where they have morning meeting, they teach character traits. But that whole structure of socio-emotional learning, if you think about what we do, is we do use the components of responsive classroom, making sure that we have a morning meeting every day to actually have an opportunity to build that positive culture and climate in our schools. And then there's opportunities later on during the day where kids practice that. In addition to that responsive classroom, we also have a curriculum called Second Step. Second Step is kind of like the direct instruction on the socio-emotional learning. That's kind of what we have throughout the district in all our schools up to the high school. It looks a little bit different at the high school, but the model's really strong, K to 8. But that Second Step provides teachers with direct lessons to actually teach those socio-emotional skills to students. So those are happening either in morning meeting, or they're happening through guidance counselors coming in and doing those groups with kids. So that's happening district-wide. Did I miss anything?
So we have like?
No, I think the other thing about Second Step is the great thing about it is if there is an interest or a need, the lessons are allowed to be implemented out of order. So if there is something that students are really interested in kind of pursuing, talking about, really adding kind of opportunities for discussion within their classroom, the teacher can then take lessons out based on a theme that seems to be coming up for students.
So you'd say that we have kind of a base level of socio-emotional learning curriculum and interventions, and then on top of that, some schools may implement different strategies?
Correct. Yep, different approaches.
And when it comes to our strategic plan goals?
Yep.
Is the goal to kind of pilot out those programs that are working well in the schools and then embrace them in all the schools, or allow schools to kind of build on top of our base core, however they feel appropriate?
It's allowing some, you know, flexibility for our schools, but it's also allowing our schools to kind of know and work with what's best out there for their population of students, right? So it's because we know one size doesn't fit all. And sometimes we may be able to use two different curriculums but get the same bang for our buck, so to say, when you're talking about socio-emotional support. So we haven't said like, this is, everyone's doing Second Step at 9:30 every day. We have that resource available when there needs to be direct instruction on socio-emotional learning and the skills being taught. That's the resource that we use, but there's other pieces that our teachers pull from to implement for the students in front of them. So it's not a one-size-fits-all model.
I was only going to add that all of our professional development and the resources that we have, including the school resources that some schools are using and others might not be, they're all rooted in the same beliefs and the same structures around CASL, which is something that Brendan, our director of SEL, is really making sure that all of our professional learning, our counselors, our guidance team, that everyone is really kind of calibrated in that same professional learning model. So the language is still the same across schools, even if the resource might be slightly different.
CASL is an acronym?
Yes, and I can get that for you.
It's a socio-emotional learning.
C-A-S-E-L?
C-A-S-E-L, yep. But that CASL wheel, that's kind of the gold standard of socio-emotional learning, and the different tiered supports or curriculum that we use fall under that CASL. And the different tiered supports or curriculum that we use fall under that CASL wheel.
It's collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning.
Collaborative academic. Great.
That being said, too, this work wouldn't be possible without the financial support from the school committee. Remember, we've added additional guidance counselors, additional clinical interventionists, school psychologists, behavior analysis, you name it, we have the supports now. So that's in all our buildings. So kudos to us for having those supports in order for the SEL piece to be fully implemented. So, all right. Our next initiative is number three, which is Staff Development and Diverse Recruitment Plan. So in order to accomplish this commitment, we've been looking at our professional development. And one of the things that we have done this year is we've created a professional development plan for all our schools. So that was one of the activities that we did with our administration in August, July and August, when we met with administrators over the summer. They had to put together a clear, school-based professional development plan for each of their buildings. In addition to that, the district also has several professional development days where we've been using the data that we receive for teachers, from teachers, to make sure we are providing meaningful professional development that they have asked for. Do you want to talk a little bit about that, since you head up the professional development, Glenda?
Sure. So we consistently ask for feedback from our professional learning experiences, and we also leverage our district-wide data. We look at both the data and the feedback that educators are sharing with us and really make informed decisions around professional learning based on those needs. The other thing is that in order for people to have relicensure, it's really important for them to have access to professional learning around special education, ESL, and their specific content. So it's also a balance of making sure that we have accessibility of all of that, also within our own district. This year, one of the things that we are really excited about that we offered was some choice-based offering within the professional development day. So there were definitely some unique things about that, but I think people appreciated having an opportunity to self-select some of their PD this time around. And we will continue to expand on that. We kind of did a soft launch and piloted it with a small group of people, and we'll continue to expand those choice-based offerings moving forward.
Are those kind of like Zoom video?
Some of the choice-based are, and are modules. However, we also have really worked on leveraging staff members and experts within the school building so that they are either trained or create professional learning. We provide stipends for them to be able to lead some of those sessions and plan for those sessions. And so many of those sessions actually happen within the school building itself. And then, of course, our directors also lead sessions. I lead session, John leads session, so, you know, it's really a wealth of people who are doing the heavy work.
And that's one of the positives, I think, this last PD day that we had in November, we had actually a lot of teachers actually leading those sessions, and we were able to, we have some money set aside in our budget to pay them a small little stipend to actually do the planning, execute the lesson, and look at the feedback. So we also are trying to grow our leaders and our teachers to actually deliver that PD.
I love that.
So it's been positive, so we hope to continue that model too, we're moving forward. So, because we have a lot of experts here within the district, why go out?
Use them.
Use them, so.
John, have you received any information on the governor's diverse recruitment plan yet?
I can talk a little bit about the, actually, coming up, the teacher apprenticeship program that will fall under that. I can talk a little bit about that.
This is something new that just came up by the governor?
Okay. I think that teacher apprenticeship program falls under that too. So, but I'm going to talk a little bit about that. So the next piece is grow our own talent, right? So we know that talent right now in education, there's not a lot of teachers getting into this profession anymore, right? So we have to be able to actually keep our talent that we have in district. And to do that, we've done a few things. The first thing is we've created a teacher leadership academy, and this will be year number three of our teacher leadership academy. The purpose of the teacher leadership academy is to actually grow administrators that are already in the district and give them a sense, a year-long sense of what it's like to be an administrator in Pittsburgh. So what we do is we meet with them monthly, and we provide updates on what it's like to be a superintendent, what it's like to be an assistant superintendent, what it's like to be an ESL director, or a special education director, or a principal. And we have these different opportunities throughout the year. We build in, you know, the current research around being a school leader, that's also in there. But one of the things that they do is they learn what it's like to be an administrator in Pittsburgh. And one of the things that we found, and luckily, we've been really fortunate to actually hired several of these candidates that actually participated in the TLA the last two years. We moved them up to several administrative positions like assistant principals. In addition to that, we've also, some of them get into it, and after they experience the year-long program, say, absolutely not, I never want to be an assistant principal, I never want to be a principal. But that's good, I'm glad we're able to provide that opportunity. But what this does, it also builds their leadership capacity to be teacher leaders. They might want to move into a role as an instructional coach. They might want to be a teacher leader on the ILT, or they may want to be a grade-level teacher leader. So there's other leadership opportunities that we expose them to, but this allows them to actually see what it's like to be an administrator in Pittsburgh before actually pursuing that. And we've had a lot of really good opportunities, and we've seen a lot of growth in our participants in this program. So we're fortunate to have this program in Pittsburgh. I actually presented with a team of teachers last July at the superintendent's conference on the Cape. I went down there to actually showcase this work. And there's actually now several districts throughout Massachusetts who have replicated this model and are using it. So kudos to us, it's great to see that happening.
And I missed, did I miss what TLA is?
Teacher Leadership Academy.
Teacher Leadership Academy. So we've had two successful teacher leadership academies?
We have.
And we're recruiting for cohort three?
Yep.
Is that planned?
And, yep, right now, so unfortunately, this cohort, we've had a pretty good, the last three, two years, we had a pretty good representation of elementary, middle, and high school. But for this, some reason, this year, we only have middle school and high school teachers on there.
For cohort two?
For cohort three. We don't actually have a lot of elementary folks that, no one was interested for some reason this year. So the majority of our teacher leaders in the academy are middle school and high school teachers.
So did we already recruit cohort three, or we currently recruit?
Nope, we already recruited over the summer, and they started last month.
I got started, John, as my title's Elementary Administrative Intern.
Yep.
And that's how I started. I work as an elementary administrative, and I also worked a year in the superintendent's office, filling in the assistant superintendent's job, all under this internship. And that was before the turn of the century.
But that's how you got your experience and you learned, right?
Yeah.
So we're happy and we're proud that we're able to provide this opportunity. And then the last piece that we're looking at is opportunities to strengthen that pipeline from paraprofessional to teacher. So we've actually started this with Pittsburgh State last year. We had an opportunity for any current paraprofessional who has at least a two-year degree can actually go to Pittsburgh State, and because they're a paraprofessional in Pittsburgh, some of that experience will carry over for course credit.
And don't we pay for it?
And we do offer some financial assistance involved in this. We only have had about two people actually take a part in this. So, you know, great program, but we don't have, we don't have the people signing up that we thought we would. So that being said, in the fall this year, the state is launching a new teacher apprenticeship program. That sounds very similar, you have to have at least an associate's degree. And this apprenticeship program actually allows you to continue working in the district that you work in, but allows you to actually get experience in the classroom. And then you actually then go to a college, us being Pittsburgh State University, and partner with them and for them to fulfill their requirements. It does require them to have at least an associate's degree. We initially had, a couple of weeks ago, we had our first discussion with Pittsburgh State on how to get this teacher apprenticeship program up and running, because a school district has to have a university partner. We have that, right? So that being said, obviously, all the school districts around us have contacted Pittsburgh State to do this. So right now, Pittsburgh State is prioritizing us, and I think Leominster to do this work. So we had initial conversations with them that we're probably going to set a cohort together, a Pittsburgh-Leominster paraprofessionals who are interested, because you really have to have a cohort to keep this going in the right direction. So we're going to team up with Leominster and Pittsburgh State. And it looks like our first cohort right now, we're going to offer anyone who's interested in pursuing a degree in special education.
So this would be cohort one of the paraprofessional teacher apprentices?
Yes, yep, yep. That won't start until next school year. I actually have a meeting next week on December 11th with the state to actually go over the requirements for this. So that's something that we're currently have in the works.
And you can get an associate's degree now at Mount, which is a community college for free.
For free, yep, yep.
John, do we have any feedback on, Jeremy, on the program you started at the high school?
Yeah, the education pathway, educator pathway, that's another one. I think we only have, what, two, Jeremy? It's been roughly two. I think what we have seen at times is 10 to 15 or so students from each class will pursue teaching, but they don't necessarily do it at Pittsburgh State. Because there's a, we had been doing it for a number of years, the school had been doing the Future Teacher Signing Day, which is set up much like, you know, if a student athlete signs a Division One letter of intent. And oftentimes, we'd have 10 to 20, depending upon the cohort. But many were more compelled to forge a path, you know, outside of Pittsburgh. But we were getting two to three, and I think what we've tried to pursue is students who have graduated, and then two to three years later, they realize, oh, wow, I might want to become a teacher. I heard Lainey Jaramillo's name, you know, earlier, who was a great candidate for something like that. So I stay in touch with recent graduates or graduates from two to three to five years and tell them, you're still eligible to pursue this, and you can get the scholarships that are funded partially by Pittsburgh State Alumni Association, yes. It really would allow a student to attend Pittsburgh State for almost nothing. And part of the agreement is they're guaranteed employment in the Pittsburgh public schools upon conference of their diploma and certification.
What a great deal.
Yeah, we just need more.
So we've got to keep recruiting. Keep working, keep having conversations with kids, right? So that's something that we're working on.
Yeah.
So the last two pieces around commitment number three is recruitment and retention. We always are trying to firm up our recruitment and retention process here in Pittsburgh, how we onboard people, how the paperwork flow happens, how, you know, how we're asking interview questions, where we're advertising, where we're going out and actually doing recruitment fairs, things like that. We're trying to constantly improve and get new ideas to help with retention and recruitment. So that's an ongoing process that we continue to work on here in Pittsburgh. And then the last piece is the mentorship program. We're really happy that this is our first year. Educators have a really robust mentorship program. This is year three of the revised mentorship program that we started, you know, three years ago. We did a lot of work to actually revise it and make it more relevant for the teachers coming to Pittsburgh. We've had a lot of success with changing on how we actually are onboarding our new teachers to Pittsburgh. We've added more days in the beginning of school year to actually do a better job on getting them acclimated on how we do things in Pittsburgh. That's been very successful. And the addition of the course, we actually have a course that happens once a month that we provide direct instruction for our new teachers during their first year. We actually have a course textbook that actually supports teachers in the different things they'll experience in each month that is very helpful to them. And then the last thing that we have is we actually, in the first three years in Pittsburgh, every teacher new to Pittsburgh has to take the Skillful Teacher Course. And the Skillful Teacher Course is the best course you'll ever take as an educator, because it really focuses on that best practice in pedagogy that you need to become an effective teacher. That course, we offer it for free. We offer it for free.
Including materials.
Including materials for every new teacher to Pittsburgh. And that's something that a lot of districts don't do. So kudos to us. And then last but not least, the last thing that we did this year is Principal Mentorship Program. We have a lot of new principals in our district, and being a principal sometimes can be lonely. So over the summer, Glenda, working with Craig Shalafow, a former veteran principal in Pittsburgh, they created a new Principal Mentorship Program for all new principals in Pittsburgh. And this is our first year of doing that. And overall, Glenda, I would say that we get pretty good feedback so far from our administrators. They're actually happy to have a group that they're able to actually bounce ideas off and work with on a monthly basis, or a daily basis if needed.
Yeah, it's a small cohort, you know, Craig and I meet regularly to plan. According to, Desi does have some guidelines and expectations for principal and leadership mentorship, so we do follow kind of that process. So that's really helpful. And then I just want to put in a plug that the onboarding for new teachers this year was really great and amazing. We got a lot of feedback from our new staff members that felt like all the questions that they had to ask, you know, were answered, and it seems like it was really helpful having a second day. So that first day was really about like operational needs, HR, kind of routines, questions, and then the second day was really curriculum, SEL, and classroom management work. So anyway, I'm very excited about how our onboarding has gone and how our mentorship program has been going.
I think one of the most positive pieces of feedback that I received about the mentorship program, or I'm sorry, the onboarding and mentorship program was the new teachers that are veteran teachers that have come to Pittsburgh, they said that we do a stellar job at preparing them as they enter the classroom. So they have a really good sense of the curriculum, the resources, and the technology. So it's nice to hear.
Yeah, I'm very excited, very happy.
All right, moving along, any questions on commitment number three? Commitment number four is the resources. So the first piece is budget alignment. So one of the things, and this is work that Jeremy does, one of the things that we've tried to improve on is the knowledge of our administrators, our school-based administrators, and really understanding our budget and actually what their school budgets are made of and what they can use the money for. So each month, Jeremy works with the business department, gets a printout, and then actually goes and actually meets with each school's leadership team and reviews their budget and to go over it, to ask any questions, to let them know where they are on each line item, if they're over, if they're under, letting them know that they need to spend certain money by a certain time. So Jeremy goes around and supports all the principals in the buildings, and he also makes sure that all the decisions that we are making regarding our budget is based on student needs and the goals set out in our strategic plan. Next one is resource optimization. So just being really transparent about how the funds are being used, one of the things that we've been trying to do a better job at is making sure we are monitoring our special education. Because special education is something that is, we can't plan for. We can't plan for new special education students moving into the city, and we can't plan for the needs that they may have. And sometimes, some of their needs may require specific placements, and also some of their needs may require specific transportation. So we need to make sure that we are doing a better job to make sure that we are tracking that better and that we can actually plan for any unexpected expenditures that are coming in. And then last but not least, impact monitoring, just making sure we're making And then, last but not least, impact monitoring, just making sure we're making sound decisions and evaluating all the work that we do, like, for example, around our co-teaching. Are we giving the biggest bang for our buck on all the money that we are putting towards co-teaching? Are we seeing student data improve? And just making sure that we're also paying attention to all our capital improvements that we need to be making throughout the district. You know, we've been really fortunate to have, you know, SRF funds, COVID funds, over the last few years. That money's wrapping up, so we really need to, now's the time for us to actually sit down as a school administration team and as a school committee to actually see the work that we need to do in capital improvements in all our buildings and come up with a clear plan on how we're going to do that over the next few years. Jeremy, do you want to add anything on to this section?
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing I would add is, as Superintendent Thompson said, you know, we plan to, we have the frequent communications and meetings with the school buildings to work with them and help them monitor and develop their own site-based budgets. But we, we'll do a sneak preview of the capital plan tomorrow night at Resource Subcommittee. So, you know, I know it's going to be hard to wait that long, 24 hours, but get ready.
Be ready.
It's going to be exciting. Yeah, no, I think what we've really been working on is capturing all of the major mechanical and structural components of our buildings, noting the year, noting the installation, the brand, et cetera, and having, you know, the amortization, the depreciation ratios implemented in this tool that we have. So, you'll be able to see, because I think what we'll be able to do as a group is then prioritize, these are the things that we really have to have as our top five, you know, types of capital investments over the next year and do that on a three to five-year schedule.
Great, thank you. Any questions on resources? All right, moving right along. The next two, sense of belonging and community and stakeholder engagement. They overlap a little bit, so you may be hearing me go back and forth and talking about each. But for commitment number five, sense of belonging, we're really making sure that we create a really welcoming and belonging place for all our students in the Fitchburg Public Schools. So, one of our ways to do that is we've partnered with a, excuse me, a company called The Equity Imperative, and they're really focusing on what really creates a welcoming and belonging system or school system for students. So, right now, we've been, we just had our first training, was it last week or the week before, Glenda?
Mm-hmm.
With The Equity Imperative. And right now, we're focusing on building our leadership capacity, on creating what it, on teaching them what it takes to actually have a really welcoming and belonging school environment in our buildings. So, we're going to be doing that work with our administrators, so they actually can go back and share that with their, with their staff and then work on improving that in their schools. So, students feel a part of the work that's happening and feel a part of the school community. So, that's some of the work that we're doing around advancing inclusion. And then, the last piece on sense of belonging is strengthening connections. So, we need to get more feedback from parents, more feedback from students. So, one of the things that we've tried to do is, we are trying to look at the year, and we're going to be hosting some forums as we move into the winter and spring to actually get some feedback from parents and community on ideas they have for our next strategic plan, so that's going to be happening. In addition to that, we also have a tool that we just started using called Panorama. And this Panorama tool allows us to actually send out surveys to families, community members, and students to actually get a clear idea of how our school is doing for students. So, we're going to be sending these surveys out in the winter and spring to get more information for parents on how we're doing. And in addition on that, we're also going to be using these surveys to actually get a very clear picture on what parents want to see in our new welcome center that we are, hopefully, you'll hear about in January and February, more to come on that. But the welcome center that we hope to launch next fall in the district, we are going to be reaching out for families to get more information on what they would like to see in this welcome center around supports that they need. So, that's a little bit about how we're trying to create a real strong sense of welcoming and belonging in our schools. So, it's training, it's getting our administrators caught up to speed, it's getting feedback from families to get a better sense of what they're looking for and a better sense of how we are doing, serving the community, because it is all about serving the students and the community. That's the work that we're in. And then, last but not least, commitment number six, community and stakeholder engagement. In order to get this information, we've got to engage our stakeholders. We've got to get to know our families. So, one of the things that we're doing is partnership alignment, so making sure that we are analyzing our needs, we're educating administrators, like I said before, creating that welcoming and belonging environment that we need to have in all our schools, and making sure we have those inclusive schools and we are fostering those experiences so students do feel a part of that. We also have to empower our families, again, get more insight from our families, making sure they have a voice and they have a word into the decisions and to get input on what they would like to see us do in Fitchburg. And then, the last piece is just celebrating our partnerships. We have a lot of strong partnerships. One of the things that I did this past summer is I met with a lot of our partners. I think I met with over 25 partnerships or different organizations that actually partnered with Fitchburg. And out of those 25 meetings I had this summer, there was anywhere between one and six or seven people that came to these meetings. So, I got a lot of feedback from a lot of partners that team up with Fitchburg, and one of the things that I can say is they want to help us. They want to be a part of Fitchburg. They're looking to collaborate. So, one of the things that we're going to do is, once we have this welcome center and we have this rolled out in Fitchburg, those people are going to have a seat at the table, and they're going to be in that welcome center to actually help us do the work that this community needs in order to be successful. So, that's just a little bit about the community and stakeholder engagement. And those are our six priorities, and I'm sorry I talked for a long time. But was there any questions on our six priorities? Something that I said that didn't make sense? Questions that you have around our six priorities? Eva is here in the crowd, and she had a lot to do with commitment number five and number six, that's why she's here. Eva, if you want to add anything to that? Did I do a good job? Thank you, Eva. But is there any questions on our commitments and the work that we have set out to do this school year?
Looks good.
Looks good?
Good, John.
Yep. All right, so just two more seconds. As you all know, we are in the process of developing our new strategic plan, so there will be some stakeholder engagement parent forums, family forums coming up. That information will go out shortly. In addition to that, there's a steering committee that has been formed. The steering committee, I think their first meeting is on December 12th at 4:00 at Central Office. If anyone is out there that's listening, is interested in being a part of that steering committee, you can email me or my administrative assistant, Mary Alexandra Molina. There's still spots available. And if you have any input, please feel free to reach out. There'll be more information going out shortly regarding this. Like I said, your voice matters, so please, 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 think about taking part in some of the opportunities coming up in the next several months. And then, just to let you know, my plan is to roll out in about July or August, our new strategic plan for the next five years coming up. So, that's all for me around our district's strategic plan. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And one of the last pieces of information we like to share this evening is around our electric bus fleet. So, we have an update. Mr. Roach provided you a handout. He's going to provide a quick update on where we are with the electric buses.
Yeah, so, there's been some great progress there. We are, no pun intended, moving forward, and it's great. We, the general process is, as a community that is eligible to pursue some of these grants in partnership with our bus service contract provider, which happens to be First Student, we were able to apply for the EPA's Clean School Bus Grant. And if you want this presentation, it doesn't have the length, so you can find more information about those particular grants. But EPA made about, I think it was $5 billion available across the country, targeting, you know, communities like ours. And so, we had a number of meetings with First Student and did pursue that round of clean school bus grants. And in May, we were noted that we were, in fact, awarded a $6.2 million grant for, that would roughly purchase 18 electric vehicle school buses. So, great, that's awesome. The next part really is, you know, if you're familiar with where the First Student Bus Depot is, on Airport Road, corner of Airport, and I always want to say Benson, but I don't think that's correct, but it is. Yeah, thank you. It's down there, it's a large lot. First Student has a number of contracts in the area. So, the second phase is really pursuing another grant through the ACT, Accelerating Clean Transportation Grant, which is funded by the Mass Clean Energy Center. And that was, we discussed, met a number of times, got the grant application in, and then we were awarded a $1.6 million grant, which would upgrade the bus depot. I have a couple of images that would show what that would look like. Ultimately, you need to be able to charge the vehicles, and much of that, in a walkthrough down at the First Student lot about two months ago, it was a lot warmer, I know that, we were able to take a look at how that would potentially work with First Student reps, with the Mass CEC folks, and our bus transportation coordinator, Donna Hildreth. So, exciting news there. We're currently now also pursuing, so we have a 30 yellow bus fleet, just so you can frame the context. So, we are pursuing another EPA Clean School Bus Grant, and that would be for eight additional EV buses. We'll need an acknowledgement of the pursuit of that tonight. It's simply just acknowledging, because with all of these, you don't actually have to accept it, even if you're selected by the EPA, or in the case of Mass Clean Energy Center, you don't have to accept. But I think we, it would make a significant difference in many ways, and I'll talk about that in a second. But we should, you know, to answer the question of when will these EV buses actually be implemented and launch in the fleet, it looks like late 2025, early 2026 is the best estimates we've been given by the EPA folks. If we look at the next slide, this shows you Massachusetts and the number of communities that have actually received these grants. There are not many. You can take a look at, you know, just highlighting and hovering over community, our community, Fitchburg. You can look to see that Worcester received, I think, about a $1.75 million grant. Holyoke is the one right above Springfield. They received somewhere in the range of $7 million, I think. New Bedford and Fall River both received the grants roughly in the same amount of us as we did. All of the blue communities, most of those are really small, small totals, you know, one bus, two buses, three buses, with the exception of Lawrence, which is right in the sort of north Merrimack Valley, obviously, but that northeast portion of Massachusetts, they received a significant grant, just under $10 million. But we really did receive one of the largest in the state. And if we flip over, and you can see, you know, the buses that would be replaced by this round would be 6,200 across the country. So, you can go to the last slide, John, and this just gives an idea, I think, of what this potentially can do. It is the largest mass transit system in the country, you know, school buses. So, there's about just under half a million school buses across the nation. That image to the top left shows you, I think, what it would look like, actually, at our bus depot in terms of charging stations lined up one after the other, because they have to be able to charge the buses overnight or relatively quickly. Only about 1% to 2% of the nation's fleet currently is EV, so that's roughly, that's under 10,000. So, it's a very small amount at this point. So, we'll be, we'll be sort of forging a path in many ways. But the EV buses use a significant less fuel in terms of fossil fuels. Some of the electricity that is generated does come from fossil fuels, that's a fact. But some, quite a bit comes from, you know, energies like the sun and hydro and wind and different things that provide, are provided into the grid. And, you know, obviously, our Unitil partners were at the, have been, you know, lockstep with us on this. I think some of the benefits that really impact kids and school administrators that are waiting outside and teachers and paraprofessionals, there are no emissions. If you've ever stood by buses for a period of time, you know, it's not particularly pleasant. The odor is strong, and those fumes are going regardless. So, that's one really significant upgrade, I think, and they are virtually silent. So, it also reduces noise pollution in your communities as well, because we all know, anytime a bus tries to zip up Mount Globe or something like that around Long Joe, it is loud. South Street, you know, that type of thing. So, the costs are prohibitive. They are about $350,000 for one. A new diesel-fueled bus is probably around the 125 to 115 range. Yeah, so significantly, that's where this grant is really going to help us, because about 80% of our fleet then would be EV, if we can get the second, if we can get the eight additional buses. But I think the biggest impact is if all of the school buses in the United States switched over to EV, the amount of greenhouse gases removed from the atmosphere is exponential. Again, it is the largest mass transit system in the country and one that I think we've all shared in at some point or other, or experienced. So, we're excited about it. It's, we're getting into the next phase here, and again, we hope to see these buses silently zipping around Fitchburg in about a year.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Do you know if these are Bluebird buses?
I don't know what the actual make would be. So, Bluebird is Anderson Company there, a significant bus manufacturer. They have applied for some of these grants as well and have been awarded. In fact, they go by ANDCO, and I believe, if you looked at that map again, the Springfield-Holyoke area was ANDCO, was the, if you touch on any one of these, we really had to pursue with First Student, and every one of those communities did. They pursued it with their bus service provider. So, that I don't know exactly. I have, the only one that I've experienced was a Bluebird, was an Anderson Company, and it's impressive, it really is. It's an interesting, it'll be an interesting shift.
Go ahead, Jim.
Couple of questions. With the grant, are the buses owned by us, the school district?
So, we were able to pursue it, meaning our community, through First Student.
Okay.
If for some reason, when we're in the first year of five-year transportation contract, they're five-year contracts, transportation contracts, if for some reason First Student did not win the bid, when we come up again, they would shift to another community. However, that community has to meet the criteria that Fitchburg does, which is a certain percentage of low-income Title I recipients, that type of thing. So, I would anticipate that when we do go out to bid again in four years, First Student will do everything in their power to win that bid. And I will say, bus companies, I probably shouldn't say this, it's like a monopoly system. So, I'd be stunned if another bus company pursued the contract, because they know First Student owns that area, and it just works that way.
We've learned that thus past year, haven't we, Jeremy?
Yeah, for sure. But in this, I feel a lot better about, you know, our partnership with First Student, going, pursuing this, moving forward. They're really enthusiastic about the shifts that this will make in transportation for students.
So, their, First Student is getting a lot of really up-to-date technology, not only the buses, but also the charging stations.
100%.
And so, in the next part of this five-year contract we're under right now.
Yeah.
Eventually, we'll include the electronic will include the electronic buses.
We should transition in probably year three is what we're looking at. Could be a little sooner. It really is going to depend on how quickly the infrastructure can be updated at, at that bus depot.
So then my, my last question is, I know, I think it was last year, and I forget, what city or town it is in Massachusetts, but there's, charging stations are set up that when the buses aren't being used, for example, over a holiday break or a weekend, they can feed back into the network.
The community.
Community, so that the money, I'm not getting the right words to come out of my mouth right now.
The credits.
But, but they would feed back into the, the network, the system, and get refunds or credits or whatever. Are these buses, will this be set up that way that they can?
So that is a possibility, some of the research that I've done. I'll have to get back to you specifically. Some of the buses do come with solar panels on the roof, some of the EV buses that are being deployed now, and they do exactly that. They generate electricity back into the grid. The type that we would end up, I don't know. You would have to go out to bid and then, you know, obviously, First Student would, you know, would purchase with the funds that they have, the volume that they're trying to get, which is 18. But it's, it's very much a possibility at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Great, exciting.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
That is exciting.
Yeah. So last piece for this evening is budget updates. We have some grants to submit and accept. We have two grants to submit. The first grant is for this, from the School Nutrition Equipment Assistance for Schools in the amount of $20,000. This will allow us to purchase equipment to provide healthier meals and serve healthier meals to our students. And the second grant that we need permission to submit is for the FY25 Playful Learning Institute Preschool Through Grade Three Grant. This is up to $175,000. This is for us to focus on pre-K to grade three and how to take some of the pieces that happen in out-of-school time in our after-school program, and how do we actually bridge the gap into the academic day and the after-school programming to actually make more playful learning experiences for students in grades pre-K to three. So that is two grants we'd like to submit. And the other four grants that we are accepting this evening, the first one is for Acceleration Academies Grant for $22,000. That's to support, I think it's for McCain-Longsjo, correct, Glenda? It's for McCain-Longsjo to do some academic support and intervention during February vacation.
Yes, that's accurate.
The next one is the Mass Cultural Council Grant for $5,000, which will fund some multicultural events throughout the district. The third grant is the Rethinking Discipline Initiative Grant for $40,000. That's to help us improve discipline and outcomes for students throughout the district. In addition, the funds will be actually used to complete our district-wide code of conduct for our schools. And then the last piece is from the OpenSciEd Massachusetts 1-8 Foundation. That's a private grant in the amount of $500. That will support the implementation of OpenSciEd curriculum at the middle school level. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Superintendent Thompson. In front of us, we have action items, 24-436 through 24-437. We have already approved 24-435. What was that?
I was going to say we did 435. We can just take them separately.
Okay. Well, we have 24-436, approved the superintendent's recommendation to submit the grant for School Nutrition Equipment Assistance for Schools and the FY25 Playful Learning Institute Preschool Through Third Grade up to $175,000.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion in second to accept action item 24-436 to submit to grants. Any questions or discussion on this matter? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, that is approved. Next, we have action item 24-437, to approve the superintendent's recommendation to accept the four grants, Acceleration Academies, Mass Cultural Council, Rethinking Discipline Initiative and the OSCE Massachusetts.
Motion to submit, to accept the following grants.
Second.
Motion in second to accept the four grants previously discussed, 24-437. Any discussion or comments on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, our action items have been voted upon. Any other business?
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss the FBA contract negotiations.
Second. Motion in second to go into executive session. Does this require a roll call?
Yes.
Mary Alexandra?
I believe it does.
Okay.
Ms. Jeffries?
Yes.
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Squallio?
Aye.
All right, so that is unanimous. We will move into executive session, after which we will only reconvene in public session to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.